Yes. Everything's going. I did put an additional link. Do you want to announce that I put an additional link in the chat? Because it looks like there's something wrong. This link is only going to go 40 minutes.
Oh, really?
What is that? Click over immediately. We'll stop and click over.
Okay. Oh, wow. We get that. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the planning board meeting of Wednesday, July 19, 2023. Tonight's agenda, we're going to review the sitewalk that was conducted this morning for MSP 22007, which is also going to lead into a public hearing for that same project. We refer to it as the 406 Main Street project. It's a Happy Valley, Happy Valley Line Beer Garden. So we're in that. And so those that are going to be wishing to speak, we're going to ask you to come up in a minute and state your name. And so, but I do have a little item that I like to read before we begin. And it does have to do with our meetings here. The planning board meetings are open to the public, and we encourage attendance. However, a public comment is only allowed under the public comments section when recognized by the board chair. Anybody wishing to speak must stand and come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes. That is in an effort to give everybody a fair opportunity to speak. All speakers will follow the rules of common etiquette, including refraining from vulgar and abusive language, yelling, arguing, and any other disrespectful behavior. Comments or complaints against employees, elected, or appointed officials of the town will not be allowed. The public comment of the portion is limited to non-agenda items only. These same regulations apply for public comments during new or old business, except for the three-minute time limit, which we can extend now. So the first item of business tonight before we get into the regular meeting. Again, just to recap, the planning board did conduct a sitewalk over 406 Main Street this morning. It was a good visit. Lasted about a half an hour. We were joined by our town staff to review the application. We had a nice little tour by the applicants. And in that tour, we had some general discussions about the fence burning, you know, open flames, burnt pits, that kind of stuff, fire pits. We addressed a couple other items related to the potential for any live music. We had a conversation about that. I thought the meeting, all in all, was pretty good and informative. Is there any other board member present at this? I don't want this morning to have anything to add to that. Yeah, we had a conversation about the structures. And so I think depending on where we go tonight, you know, in terms of the overall approval, we do need to address the structure issue. Because we do need to make sure that there are no structures within the 25-foot setback requirement. And so, but that's something we may get into the formal discussion within the meeting. You can have that conversation as well. Is there any other comments from the board in the sitewalk? Okay, so with that, we'll move directly into the public hearing in MSP 22007. Perna LLC 406 Main Street for a major site and review for a restaurant. Again, those wishing to speak, again, or they, or any items that they would like the board to be aware of, please step forward, identify yourself by name and address, and please speak up so that we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Hillary McGinnis. I live at 29 Buttonwood Road in South Berwick.
Can you speak up, please? I didn't catch that.
I'm Hillary McGinnis. I live at 29 Buttonwood Road in South Berwick. And I'm just here in support of the project and feel that it should be approved this week.
Thank you. So just a housekeeping issue, any board member wishing to speak does need to push button. And does that one not work?
Hold on one second. We're going to fix this problem. There's still my fair enough.
Oh, it looks like it. Yeah. That'll work. Thank you. This is an opportunity, both as public hearing, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Jen Becko. I live at 9 Emory's Bridge Road here in South Berwick. I'm here to support Sam Roxanne in the project. I have firsthand witness their uncompromising dedication to this project, to the integrity of the property, and their commitment to making it a place that's family-friendly and also offers something we need to this town, which I truly believe our town needs right now. I think South Berwick is lacking a few things. And I think bringing in more small businesses, places to go, recreation. This hangout is really good for the town. I think that I don't know that I've come across anyone who's dedicated these two to this cause. And I think that everyone should be behind them. It's knowing how hard work they've done on this project, and how much care they put into it. And they're very community-oriented people. And I'm really hoping to collaborate with them. As a small business owner in this town myself, I own and brand in South Berwick. It's really exciting to me to have other new businesses coming to this town. It rejuvenates all of us. More business, I feel, makes all of us do better as whole here. So I'm in support, and I hope everybody here is too.
Yep, just please step up.
My favorite thing to do, but I've lived in South Berwick since 1989.
Thank you.
Well, we're at 5 First Drive now. Oh, born and heros, I'm sorry. Yeah. And so I've known the place for a long time, and I, my son and my son played in the house together. You know, a good family. But the thing that I really like about this project is that there's a lot of new families in town that don't necessarily know each other. To have a place for people to gather and, you know, get to know their community just makes our community stronger. And I think that would be helpful.
Thank you.
I'm Tamara Stein. I'm at 19 Hill Drive. I support the project too, and I hope it's a wonderful place to run.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Sky. I live at the Chief Park Street in South Berwick. And as a local, live-on-the-hole resident of South Berwick, as someone with a young daughter and a family, and also local business, and fully in support of this project. I believe that they're really working hard to provide a life that works out, bring in new families, and create community that they'll love. And, you know, share that with other people. I think that this is all about community coming together. And the idea that it's an outdoor space for families. I think that's really important, especially coming from the last few years where we've been very secluded. I think that this would be a really positive endeavor, and we'll encourage other businesses also to come to our town and try.
Thank you.
My name is Dear Green William. I live at 32 Tibbetts Street. I'm at a butter. I'm also a friend. I lived in my little house in 1995. I live in Norman Rockwellson Bar. And you can leave your bicycle out in front of your house, and it will be there in the morning. And this little restaurant is part of the feel of that. It's a beautiful place. It's under the trees. It's near the water, but not too near the water. It's in my neighborhood. And it's a place for me to meet up with other people in my neighborhood just to get together. That's what it feels like already. It already feels like a psychic magnet. It feels good. And in case you don't know where my house is, my house on Tibbetts Street is one with the kitchen porch. Okay, that's 50 front porch. That's me. I love these folks. And I'm super glad to have them in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this public hearing, this is the public hearing for 406 Main Street? If there's someone recently. Why don't we go to Zoom and see if anyone on Zoom has any comments? Everybody on Zoom wishing to make a statement in public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Oh, hi, Pat. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Pat Robinson, Brattle Street, and I'm also representing the Conservation Commission. I, it is a good project. I think we'll take, you know, we'll get people together, as people are saying. My biggest concern is that Driscoll Brook goes right down into the Salmon Falls River. And I just have a big, big concern that there's gonna be trash and, you know, whatever. And, and a lot of, you know, people on that parking lot, it compacts the soil. It's just, it's just a big concern with me. So I'd really Sorry. If this project gets approved, that there's some oversight about that Driscoll Pond and, and the river. It's all I like to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're really into, you know, we want really good water quality in this town. It's part of why we live here. Water quality and recreation. And yes, getting together at various restaurants.
Thank you.
We're a very friendly town. I agree. Thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom wishing to make a comment? So we'll go back to the public audience. Anybody in the public?
My name is Eric Bunch from Aitlande Avenue Street. I would like to relay the fears of trash there. You know, the sand and all that. Very neat people. They need to show that there is no trash hanging around any group. I'm looking forward to this happening, those that you have said it ruined Berwick's community getting together. And it's a nice place. And I think that it would have been a great start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing in the public to speak here?
Hi, I'm Alzamuri. I live at 19 June Avenue in 400 Berwick. She wrote with Sam Roxanne and my families. I refer to South Berwick as you know, sort of family. And I have sentences that were said before me just about South Berwick lacking a few things, one of them being a space where definitely people in the town, I live in the town, have this space to walk through and enjoy spending time outside. So I'm actually excited that I will continue to support them. If we can all enjoy ourselves as much as possible.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else on Zoom wishing to do the biggest statement during this public hearing? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to call a closing public hearing at you know, it sounds like 7:17. 7:17. And with that, I want to thank everybody for attending. The comments are noted, and we will get to this, we'll be further on the agenda rather quickly, actually. Yeah, so we will open the regular portion of the meeting. And with that, I'll ask for any standing members. One nation under our individual.
Can you just please let people know on Zoom that for whatever reason, this recording is going to stop at the 40-minute mark, and we're going to immediately go over to the next recording in the chat.
Okay, so for those on Zoom, I'm being advised that there is technical difficulty. So you have the link that you're currently working on that will expire after 40 minutes. Another meeting link was put into the chat. So please, when the video shuts down, go directly to that next chat. Hopefully, the timing will be good and we'll be able to get through this. Tonight, I want to make sure that the board understands that we're going to be doing roll call voting tonight. Because we do have Percy attending via Zoom with us, and under our policy, we would have to do that. But we'll also have to have some further conversations because of prior recusals from certain items. I'd also like to recognize Zach as a voting member tonight, given your use as an alternate member. And I will not be recognizing you, Aaron, as pertains to MSP 22007 because of your prior refusal as well. Where were you on the Stand Bill project 22003? Did you refuse yourself from that too? Have we not been at a point where we need to discuss that? We have done. Go ahead. Well, he refused it, had he had a chance to review everything.
He should have refused himself because before he was a planning board member, he was coming to the meeting for that whole project.
Okay.
He should not have to. The only meeting he missed was the original one.
Okay, so when we get to that point, someone please just make sure I'm recognizing him as a voting member when we get to the 22003. So that will be a very limited narrow conversation anyway for the So again, as we move on, I just want to recognize the changes in the board. And is there any public comment on anything that anybody in the public would like us to know on any non-agenda item? I do allow generally comments on any other agenda items. But is there anything that need comments here in public? Seeing that, how about on Zoom? Okay, so moving on. We're going to have the table these minutes. Can I have a motion to table the April 19 minutes? We have to get some additional information on those. We do not have those board members present tonight. So is there a motion to the table? Some, okay, the move and second bit. Is there any further conversation tonight? And so, Percy?
Are there amendments to it? Because there's on line 215, it's not black razors, it's black racers.
Line 215?
Yeah, line 215. You may as well amend it now, right before it comes back to us.
Yeah. It's tabled, correct? Well, the motion is to table, Percy. I'm sure we can amend that.
What line is it?
I think it's 215.
At 215, racers should be racers, right? Yes. Yeah. And so the motion is to table because we lack that form of individuals to act on this. And so I'll call the vote again. Zach, you can vote. Percy, you can vote. And Aaron, I'll ask that you refrain. Okay, thank you. So Percy, I'll start with you on table in the minutes.
Fine. Yeah, I, sorry. Yes. Sorry.
I, I I, hey, great. Thank you. Those minutes are paid. We'll have to figure that out later. All right, new business, no new business. So let's get right to old business. MSP 22007, Perna LLC 406 Main Street. Board want to do? Do you have any additional questions, board members? In some way, I want to think, acknowledge some of the conversations that we've had on site this morning. Sure, you know, particularly when things came up, we were looking at the split rail fencing. Discussion around that. It's a bit low, and also young spirits being active, young spirits might be able to get through that rather easy, more easily than we would all want.
It's a bit low, and also youngsters being active, youngsters might be able to get through that rather easy, more easily than we would all want. For safety reasons, we discussed with you the owners, the installation, and additional measure to keep people going along the line, if you will. That was one of the items that you're agreeing on.
Yeah. Yes, and so we did talk about that, putting up kind of like a wire fence behind there, attached to the pole, to the fence posts. There was a comment earlier about trash. We also had a discussion about that, and we also feel that the addition of that wire fence and for the ground would also help alleviate a lot of that, as well as the safety concerns that we had. So yeah, I mean, Sam Roxanne, if there's anything you want to say on that, I mean, I think we pretty much answered that. If you want to get up and say you have, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, that sounds accurate. And I guess I can clarify, sort of the type of fence anticipated being, I mean, 36 and 40 Lincoln Hall, and it would be a welded wire mesh with holes about an inch and a half by three to four inches, and it would go from the ground to the top posts.
I heard what you talked about.
Yeah. And these staples at the back.
And so part of the conversation you had this morning was conditions of approval. We understand you're not going to be doing, you know, fire pits that would be in the condition of approval. The fence would be in the condition of approval. What we have here, the structure, we do have to address the structure issue. Yeah, there would be a condition in there, saying any structure as defined by the Southbury coordinates, for shortening its own. It couldn't be within 25 foot inside of them. That's the order. So a couple things could happen tonight. We did have this conversation this morning. Town staff was there to copy his notes. If the board is still applying, there could be a motion to approve, I mean, 2007. And then there could be a secondary motion to approve the findings of that. I do understand that based on this morning's conversation, findings of that, for the large part, are going to be fairly straightforward. Really focused more on the conditions we have of approval. And so we also have those generally prepared. The board can, we can take a quick five-minute break after approval, pass the direction. The board can look at them and agree them, and just make sure that everything that we discussed is in there, and then we can move forward with that. Now we can do a full process. That would be my preference. So else, and just as a reminder to the board, on the treatment, you can vote on this. I think it will. So there did need to be a motion to approve 2007. I'm going to set for motion, please, to approve that. I wanted to look at.
Your question. I'm just trying to remember. You're playing at 21:00. You have live music. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. You did talk about live music and
That being considered in terms of hours, maybe going into the night.
I don't recall. It's been a little while. So you folks put on your application hours of operation, one to ten. I think we had a general conversation at around 11:00, if you're going to live music. The five years at least, and I, in consideration of the neighbors in the general area, I think noise carries a lot more. Yep. So then we need one, another condition. We have those findings of that?
It has.
Yeah, when we hand those out, it's going to, this, it won't be take a five-minute quick recess and just read those with board. Yeah. Make sure that we're all Yeah, we've talked about that before.
You're good.
Let me read it.
It's not in there.
Well, then we're not going to Debbie, I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
It's fine.
Let's get it all right.
I think it is right.
Can you come?
It is right.
They can't hear anything personally.
No.
No, I think we're all clear on the
I think so.
Yeah, Sam Roxanne, we're clear on the food issue. You're being licensed here at the restaurant. It's not a takeout. There is that difference. There is an enforcement system. So I think there will be a condition in here. Any food that you're serving is going to be served on the premises, going to be prepared on the premises.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be as, as defined in, I think, the definition of the 140.
Yep.
Restaurant requires table service and reusable.
Yeah, so we're good. We're good. That's in here.
It is going to add it, reprint it for you right after.
Yes, just to note, I believe that you can still order takeout, but it's not predominantly takeout, just like any restaurant.
That's how I understand it. If you're going to order, you can try to pick it up, but you can't, you're not going to be serving for a go-walk up here. You're going to redirect. Right? So it's like this.
Somebody is very bad.
Yeah, you can get it. It's not, you're not going to be walking up and getting your, over there and walking away, but reading on your end.
I will be serving people.
Right. That's my understanding. I would also defer to perhaps Hannah on that as well, if she has a different, I'd like to hear that.
If you want to tell people on Zoom, we're going to
Yeah.
You guys are going to be going in two minutes, so.
Okay, so I'm being told that the Zoom meeting will be coming to an end momentarily, so go ahead and click on shortly to the next link. And that will actually give us time. We're going to hold out for a couple minutes, give us time to read this out.